We'll call the March 4th, 2024 City Council Workshop to Order. The first item on the agenda is a 911 presentation by Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors, Mr. City Manager. Thank you for inviting us to present the FY25 budget this evening for the Lewiston-Auburn 911 Center. My name is Tim Hall. I'm the Director of the Center. For those that I have not met, I have been with the Center for just shy of 15 years, serving in the last two as the Director. And sitting behind me are the Operations Manager, Mark Care, as well as our IT Director, Drew Just a little background on the Center, and I could spend probably the next six hours talking about all that we do, but I will not do that in recognition of everybody's time. Lewiston-Auburn 911 is an inter-local agency. It's governed by an agreement between the Cities of Auburn and City of Lewiston, and it's overseen by the Lewiston-Auburn 911 Committee, which consists of the Police and Fire Chiefs from each city, as well as a City Counselor from each city, a Citizen Representative from each city, and then another Citizen Representative that rotates every three years between the two cities. The Committee appoints a Director to manage the day-to-day functions of the Center, and the Center is primarily responsible for answering both 911, as well as non-emergency phone calls for the Police, Fire, and EMS Departments of the cities, as well as dispatching, all the dispatching that goes with those calls. Additionally, we manage after-hours phone calls for other city departments such as Public Works. In addition to serving both Auburn and Lewiston, we also maintain a contract with the Town of Poland to answer their 911 calls and dispatch for their Fire and Rescue Department. And our 911 Center has the third-highest incoming 911 call volume in the state of Maine. Only Portland and Penobscot County have a higher number of calls. We are the only 911 Center in the state of Maine to achieve Kalia accreditation. We were initially awarded that in 2009 and have since achieved re-accreditation four times since. Onto the budget. Our budget request represents an 11.13% increase over our FY24 budget, and I just wanted to touch on how that came to be. In early 2023, the calendar year, the 911 Center experienced an unprecedented staffing crisis that we had never seen before. A full 50% of our positions were vacant. We were unable to recruit candidates for the vacant positions we had, and we were at risk of losing remaining employees due to the extraordinary amounts of overtime and the lack of time off. As a direct result, management and then union engaged in mid-contract negotiations and based upon a wage study increased our hourly pay rates significantly. The FY24 budget had already been submitted at that point, so the Committee needed to take steps to adjust our budget within the approved amount of funding. That resulted in us freezing three of our full-time positions for half the fiscal year. We also reduced our overtime, training, maintenance, and licensing lines and applied $125,000 in fund balance, all of which we had to overcome in our FY25 budget. Personnel services is certainly our largest expenditure, so I'll spend the most time on that. Personnel services have increased a total of $247,307. The regular salary line increased by $202,718, which is primarily associated with annualizing those three frozen positions from last year. For the entire year, that attributes to almost $77,000. We also needed to account for step increases and COLA adjustments for employees as outlined in the collective bargaining agreement, which totals a cost of just over $84,000. And we added two new dispatched positions effective January 1 of 2025 at a cost of $53,022 in salary plus an additional $25,500 in fringe costs, which are reflected in their respective budget lines. These adjustments that I just talked about totaled about $214,000, but the total budget impact was slightly reduced by some staff turnover that we've had between FY24 and 25 that results in newer employees at a lower step on the wage scale. The overtime line itself has been reduced by a little over 19%, or $43,725. That line, and this is important, would have increased by over 15% or $35,000 if we had gone back to the same amount of hours that we had budgeted in FY23 prior to the reductions in '24. However, I've reduced those numbers of hours covered by overtime with the addition of those two full-time positions, which brings an actual reduction of our overtime line to just under $79,000 to cover the two new positions, both their salaries and fringe benefits. Those two new positions serve several purposes. One, obviously, as I just spoke about, they reduce the amount of overtime hours that are required. In calendar year 2023, our dispatchers logged almost 10,000 hours of overtime. Nearly 2,000 of that was mandatory overtime, meaning they had no choice. They could not go home. To provide a sense of the impact, to cover those hours with full-time staff would have required the equivalent of five full-time positions. Additionally, those positions would accommodate breaks and time off requests. As it stands, our ability to allow our employees to utilize their approved leave time, whether it's vacation or sick leave, is extremely limited. We must maintain minimum staffing levels. We rely on other employees being willing to work overtime to allow time off requests. When on shift, our employees are not afforded structured breaks of any kind. They take advantage of any lull in call volume to make a quick trip to the restroom or to grab some food from the kitchen, which they return to their desk to eat in between phone calls and radio transmissions. 911 dispatchers face an extraordinary amount of stress, and over time, the job will lead to impacts upon their mental and physical health. Study after study shows the effects of PTSD on 911 dispatchers is just as common as their counterparts and other public safety professions. In fact, they're now included in Maine's Workers' Compensation Law, which outlines if they are diagnosed with PTSD, it is presumed to arise from their work. For these reasons, it is critically important for us to support employee wellness, which not only includes allowing them the use of their benefit leave time, but also accounts for the need for them to take a break away from the console and perhaps have the ability to debrief away from the console after a particularly difficult call that they may have handled. These two new positions would allow us to increase staffing levels during peak days and times to handle increasing call volume. As I said earlier, the Center's call volume is the third-highest in the state of Maine, yet our staffing levels fall below other Centers with a similar call volume. Of the four highest 911 call volume Centers in the state, we are by far the lowest staffed. We have 20 full-time dispatchers currently. By comparison, the other three have 27, 37, and 33 respectively. I also believe that these positions would assist us in managing our turnover. As I mentioned previously, being a 911 dispatcher is a difficult and stressful job, combined with schedules that require 24/7 availability and the types of calls that they handle, it is no surprise that turnover rate is high. It's not just a local problem, it's a national problem, and on average, we experience the loss of three full-time employees per year. Each vacant position will take us approximately five months to backfill, between the time we post the position and get the person completely through training. By having these two additional positions, it will help absorb those normal expected departures without us relying on overtime as we work through the hiring and training process. Then I'm just going to touch on the other lines in the budget and, of course, give chances for questions, comments. The main PERS line, the retirement line, has a 5.94% increase, which is tied to salaries, and a majority of employees are selecting the main PERS retirement versus our ICMA retirement. ICMA is showing a 6.30% increase tied to contributions. That actually represents a $602 increase. Sometimes the percentages throw people off. FICA is up 12.52%, or just over $12,000. That is tied to salaries and includes the impact of those two new positions. We've also included funding for the new state-paid family leave law. They have not even completed rulemaking with this law, so it's difficult for us to judge what we should or shouldn't be doing with this, but from everything that we can find, this new law is paid for through an employee and employer tax of 1%, split 50/50 between the two, and we're estimating that to cost us about $5,000. It begins collecting in January of 2025. Health insurance costs are up just over 14%, or $57,000. That is projected to not only the rate increases for the calendar year of 2025, but we also have more employees that are obtaining family or the employee-spouse coverage versus the single coverage that we've seen in the past. Our Wellness and Medical is showing a 1.90% decrease. Our Health Reimbursement Account is showing an increase of 12.85%. That is tied to more employees opting for the family insurance plans, as previously mentioned, as well as the associated two new positions. Our Workers' Comp is flat-funded, reflecting our current rating, and our unemployment compensation has increased by 24.62%, or $650, reflecting our current rating. Contractual Services, we have a total decrease of just over 7%, or $16,000 reduction. We have flat-funded printing, postage, and telephone lines, and shockingly, our utilities are actually down this year based on projections. Our Mileage, Reimbursement, and Medical Exam Lines, we have flat-funded. Maintenance and Licensing Line has decreased by just over 12%, or $15,000. This is simply based on some of our software licensing costs are not annual costs. They occur every two or three years, so that's why we're seeing the reduction this year. Repairs to Buildings showing a slight increase, just over 1% or $280, due to projected service costs. Legal Fees and Miscellaneous Services, we have flat-funded. Our In-Service Training, we have increased by 16.31%, or just under $1,500. That is restoring the funding to our FY23 levels. Supplies and Materials are also flat-funded, which includes office printing and other supplies. Our Fixed Charges are showing an overall increase of 4.59%, or just over $1,500. We have flat-funded our dues. Insurances are up 5.37%, or about $1,500, and that is tied to the general liability, errors and omissions, and liability insurance policies that the Center carries. There is no debt service reflected within our budget itself. Each city carries debt service separately for the FY20 Capital Radio Project that went Capital increased by 10.67%, or roughly $1,700. Office Equipment was down by about $1,000, which is because a shredder that we budgeted last year is not necessary again this year. Communication Equipment is showing almost a 26% increase, and that is tied to the replacement of our firewall at the Goff Hill Radio Tower Site at a cost of approximately $2,700. Our Revenue, User Fee, and IT Support Fees total about $128,000. That's money that's coming into our budget. That is reflective of an increase in revenue from both our lease and user fees, as well as an increase in our contract with the Town of Poland. And the 911 Committee has also put $70,000 from fund balance into the budget to reduce the request to each city this year. And that is the general overview. I will certainly entertain questions about the budget or the Center or anything else.
Are there any questions from the Council? Council Platts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hall. I had one question regarding the Poland contract.
Yes.
I think in the beginning of your presentation, you stated an 11.13% increase request. At what point, and would it be requested, at what point does that Poland contract come up for negotiation, and would we be asking them to see a similar increase in what they're being billed?
Yeah, so I don't have the exact numbers with me, but we just renewed that contract in July of '23, and they did see a significant increase in the fees that we charged them, their fees. We have two different contracts with them. One is to answer their 911 calls, and one is to dispatch for their Fire Department, and both of those contracts increased, not only because their population increased, their calls for service increased, but we recognize the need to increase them to try to keep up with our budget.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will we be getting a copy of what you just discussed with us that I've been taking notes, we've been taking notes on?
I can send that.
Councilors, when we start getting into our budget, that's when you'll have the full packet, and we'll start discussing the intergovernmental budgets at that time.
Right, but will we be getting the words that he just spoke as well?
You're going to have his entire budget. I can ask, I think he had some notes if he could probably provide that or something like that.
Right. I mean, I've tried to keep up and write notes and try to get ideas for him that what I want to ask questions for later. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Council? Perhaps, I might have missed this, but could you clarify, what's the full-time equivalency headcount for dispatchers at this point?
So, operationally, we have 14 full-time dispatchers and six full-time supervisors, and then I would be requesting two additional dispatchers.
Right, and leaving aside the two new ones, what's the vacancy rate now after the contractual changes to improve the benefit package?
We saw promising results. We have two open positions currently, and we just made a conditional offer to somebody last Friday, so that'll leave us with one.
And when you post these positions, has the pool of candidates increased based on the enhanced compensation?
Absolutely. Not only has the pool increased, but the quality of candidates has increased.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the Council?
Just want to clarify, so that's 16, if you were fully staffed right now, prior to the two additional, that's 16 dispatchers?
We would have 20 completely. So, there's 14 dispatchers and then six supervisors, but our supervisors are working supervisors, so they're sitting at desks actually handling radios and phones. Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the Council? No? Thank you very much, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Manager?
I'm going to go to the front. Okay. Couple changes that you're seeing for those who are returning. In the past, you used to have a joint presentation with Lewiston on the Joint Agencies. Some point a few years ago, it was determined that the administrations between the two cities would sit down, but I did ask Tim to come in to present, because there's some changes within his budget that I think are important for you to hear. You will, as I mentioned to Council Gary, you will have time when I present the full Managers' Budget for us to discuss those budgets. Just so that you know, the new Councilors coming in, there's a board that does set their budget. When they set that budget, it's just to come to you. At the end of the day, as a Council, it's your determination of what that amount will be. We've had years where we've approved the budget that was requested. Lewiston may have decreased the amount, and that's flipped the other way as well. And then usually, the other city makes the adjustment, so it's an equal distribution. So that way, most of the agreements that we're talking about here with our Joint Agencies, LATC, LE 911, those are all 50% cost shares with the City of Lewiston. So, that's that process. You will get that entire budget that Tim just went over in your materials when we start looking through the full budget. LATC, why you do not have those materials yet, there's a few that we're still waiting for. We're still waiting on LATC. I believe we'll have that by March 18th. But what I'd like to do, though, is I think it's going to be important as you start going through the departments, and you're going to have three tonight. They are smaller departments. I'm going to have some handouts for you, so you'll see just their line item details as they're presenting. But what I'd like to know is, what would you like moving forward? Do you, you know, we're going to have a portal that'll be available for you to go in and take a look at the departments. We're going to have Kelsey give a demonstration on that, the meeting, the next meeting, that'll be the first, on Monday night, that'll be the first item. She's going to walk through that with you to be able to see how do you access it, you know, how do you look at specific departments? How do you look at specific line items? We'll go through that with you. You're going to see a different view of that when we do our presentations here, because we're in the actual Munis Software Program, which is different than the portal. So, tonight, though, as we go through, I do want you to get familiar with it. So, Kelsey's going to go through those line items as the departments are presenting, so you'll see the line item details that are in there. But thoughts from the Council? Would you like a good, solid book that you can reference? And then you can also use the online portal if you'd like to drill in and try to get some additional information, thinking that might be a hybrid option that you might be interested in, so.
Thoughts from the Council?
Yes, please. Book.
I'm for the book.
I'd like a book if I can give you my previous year book.
Yeah, that would be great. Those that are coming back, and actually, we might have actually given all of you a book of the current budget that you were in, but if you provide that, we'll change that up. And so it actually, they'll just leave that for us sometime this week, and we'll get those built. Knowing that there's certain pieces that I'm not able to complete yet. Normally, this is what's different. Normally, when I'm here, I'm ready to give you the full amount, and I give you all the numbers. Some of those numbers are still coming in, and partly due to contracts that we're negotiating with LATC specifically and a few others that we're still working through, but we'll work on that. So, my goal is for tonight is just to give you just a brief overview of where we are currently with the FY25 budget, what you can anticipate, and then what the workshops will look like moving forward. Already talked about the Joint Departments. The FY25 budget, as it currently sits, and this is departments submit their requests. I usually work through them before the final requests are completed, just identify priorities, but as it currently sits, the city budget is around 10%. That won't be the City Managers' Budget that I present to you, but just want you to know where we're currently sitting with city expenditures. I'm going to go through some of those budget drivers, just so you have an understanding of where we're at with these different departments. Workforce Retention, I think, you know, you heard Tim talk about it. I certainly have talked with you about it. The Councilors that are coming back, you know this from contracts that you had approved over the last year, year and a half, just the challenge that we've had with workforce and our retention efforts. Some departments, though, because of the timing of actually signing contracts, some of the line items for salaries are actually reflecting upwards of three salary increases over multiple years. The salaries line item never reflected that because the contracts were never signed when we did the budget, and so some of those are not being reflected, but they're all, all those years are being reflected in this budget. So, that's why some of these, you're going to see pretty considerable increases in salary line items. It's not as a result of added positions, it's just a result of multiple years of salaries, either COLA or STEP increases that just had not been reflected. And I'll go through some of the driving numbers. General Assistance, I think many of you have certainly had conversations with, many of you regarding General Assistance. That is an area where we're seeing approximately about $780,000 increase just in General Assistance. That's everything from housing, utilities, all the services that General Assistance provides, those are all seeing increases, and those are being based on numbers that we're projecting, that we're currently expending. So, we are already hitting those numbers. That's not something we're thinking, oh, I think we'll see an increase in General Assistance. We're already, you know, over our current budget this year on General Assistance, and we're already over by a considerable amount. And so, that's a driver that you're going to see. As you're hearing, cost of goods, everything from fuel to materials, our insurances, whether it be our health insurance or property insurance, all those line items are increasing. We do have some added positions in the budget, and that's something we'll spend some time talking about. Why are those added positions in certain departments? What does that look like? I'll give you, when it's time for me to present the full City Managers' Budget, you'll have a breakdown of all those added positions. Part of it is, well, most of it, is just to meet the certain demands that we currently have within Services, but some of it's been regarding some adjustments or added services that we brought in that might actually have a revenue offset that we can talk about, but the expense will be there, but you'll see a revenue offset as well. Benefits, due to the salary increases, benefits are reflected. So, our benefits are primarily percentage, as Tim talked about. Retirement benefits, those are all a percentage built off of the salaries, as well as FICA and everything else that you're familiar with, with salaries. And so, those adjustments, you know, that's about a $500,000 increase for the 260 employees that we have within the city, and so those are reflected within that line item. Our Debt Service is increasing about a million and a half. That's as a result of, when you approve the FY25 Capital Budget, our CIP, what we will bond on, that amount is not, the debt service for that bond for this year is not reflected until the following year, because you won't go out for bond for that till sometime in the fall, and so that interest does not hit, we do not see the debt service, principal and interest payments until the following budget year. So, what you're seeing in this 1.5 million is as a result of debt bonding that was done in FY2024, and that's separate from school. So, you'll see this, when you see a summary page of the budget, you'll see the school debt service broken out separately. Solid Waste and Recycling, so we're looking to extend our current contract with them. By extending that contract, there's some added costs, they're not going to do it for the same price, and so we know we're, for recycling, solid waste, and that's for the cost to dispose of the items, but also cost for collection. We're seeing about a $200,000 increase for that extension. The Committee is working on the RFP that will go out, and then we'll work through that, but that won't be reflected until FY26. The Intergovernmental Agencies, like Tim that was just here, LATC, those other agencies, as well as County Tax, all those items right now, with what I'm estimating for LATC, we're seeing about a $500,000 increase just in those intergovernmental budgets. School is still underway. I think Council Platts- I think Councilor Platts is, is working through that. You know, as I look at numbers and try to figure where we're going to come, what's our total tax levy impact going to be? You know, I'm estimating around a five percent increase. I've talked to the superintendent. We believe that's what's, where that's going to land. But there's still work to be done by the, by the school committee, and so that work will continue. You'll have, you will have the school numbers by April first. So that April first meeting is where we'll have the school numbers in, and, and you'll be able to work through, through the budget with a full picture of the school as well. The added thing that I put in the, in the budget this year is a capital expenditure account. One thing, this is something we've been talking about for, for many, many years. We've been talking about the fact that we have a lot of items that go into bonding that are more short term, probably shouldn't be in bonding, especially when we look at vehicles that might not last multiple years. One thing that we do, even though we, when we do bond the vehicles, we don't bond those for the complete ten years of that life of that bond. The finance director will work with our bond agent to pay those off at a different timing. They might be around three years, just so that we're not paying that interest over ten, because many times those vehicles aren't, aren't staying in our fleet that long, especially our police vehicles. So there's a five hundred thousand dollars, that's a new line item within the budget, and that's to try to pull some of those capital expenditures that we would normally bond over into our operating budget. Those are the highlights right now in the F Y twenty five general operating budget. Again, you're going to get the, the department presentations. The F Y twenty five C I P, total request from the departments, around twenty three million dollars for bonds, for bonding. That's not what will be presented, but that's what the requests are. About eleven million, just over eleven million is in roads, sidewalks, some road improvements. The communications center, one item that L A nine one one did present in their C I P is a one point two million dollars for a new communications center. There's discussions that's being done by the committee on what that will look like, where that will be. But there is a placeholder anyway for the communication center. Engine five truck is not ready to be replaced. However, it's a three, close to three year turnaround on, on order between two and three years. So we're trying to work through what we're going to do. We want to be able to place the order, but we also don't want to bond it until we need to pay it. And so, but we need to get an approval. We're going to work that through, and we'll come before you with a presentation on what we think is the best path forward on this. We're not the only municipality that's seeing this. There's, there's not many equipment, large pieces of equipment that you order today that you're going to get in the same fiscal year. Other municipalities are having that same experience. We're seeing it with L A T C, with our buses. We're on a twenty four plus month turnaround on a bus when we order it. So we'll, we'll work through that, and we'll come back before you when we do the full C I P requests. The engine two station replacement, this is part of, we budgeted a part of engine two in the previous year. This is two million dollars to go towards that. We've been phasing that in through the bond process. Just general equipment replacement, whether that's equipment for public works or vehicle replacements, you know, those coming in around three and a half million. You know, my goal when, when I present the budget, you know, I'm hoping we're going to be in that thirteen, fourteen million, and that will be a starting point for you to determine, is that the right number, or would you like to come down from that? But that will at least be all the high priority items that department managers have identified, that I'll present to you, and then through the work that you'll do, we'll determine what that amount will be. One thing you'll hear about in the presentations from the, from the departments is they'll talk a little bit about their departments. They'll talk about their org chart. How many staff members do they have? Some of, some of them will be able to provide to you some data as far as what do their departments do? How many, I'll pull Sue for an example. Sue will share with you, how many marriage licenses do they process? How many birth certificates? All the work that, the vital records work, that's, that's mandated by a clerk's office, what her department turns around, and what does that look like? As well as the growing challenges with voting. We are never seen the type of requirements that are being done through the clerk's office as we do now, and the amount of the, the challenges when it comes to how many different voting events that Sue has to coordinate. And some of that's due to a vacancy. Maybe we didn't have a full slate of school committee members when we started, and so now there's a process for that. And we have a, we have a resignation that came in. I think Sue said maybe ten days beyond the time that we could have got it in for the June, I think the June primary. We missed that window, so now there'll be another election. And so, but those are, those are big demands for Sue, but it's also big demands on our wardens and ward clerks that we have as people who sign up and think, okay, yeah, that's maybe two, twice a year I'll do that, but now we're, yeah, that's really about five times coming in and do that. So it's, it's a lot. And so Sue will share some of those things. That's just an example of what you'll, you'll hear from the departments. Ask them questions, ask them about programs, ask them about what they're, they're working on. I've asked them to highlight certain projects. When, when Liz gives her presentation, she's going to highlight certain things regarding events, so you'll know what our events have been like. But feel free to ask them, you know, questions. You'll have the schedule ahead of time, so you'll know what departments are coming before you. Feel free to, if there's something specific that you're looking at and you're like, hey, I'd really like them to, to cover this, let me know. I'll work with the department, we'll make sure we have that for you. I'll hand out to you the paper summary before we get started. And like I said, we'll, we'll adjust next week with, with added materials for you. Questions about where we're currently at or the, where we're at? So every Monday moving forward for the month of March, we'll have a budget meeting. And if there's additional time that you are looking for, then let the mayor and I know so we can work on schedules to try to look at some additional workshop time, i- if that's something that you need as you move forward. And I know it's, you're not going to see it, we're piecing it out over multiple, multiple dates, but the, the off meeting dates, I've really built a lot of, I put larger departments on those off meeting dates. So those workshops, you'll be able to see fire, police, public works. Those are some of the larger departments that you're going to spend a little bit more time in. Those are, you know, that's, some of those departments are close to, those three departments alone are somewheres around eighteen million dollars. So those are a big part of our budget, so it's, those will be good for you to look at. I, I think probably you, for the new counselors coming in, you'll, you won't, you'll just think this is why we've always done it. But one thing that we did differently in this budget for the counselors that are, have come back is that we've moved fuel, we've moved utilities. There's certain things that were in every department's budget. We put those all under facilities and energy. The reason why we've done that is, as I was going through looking, and we've been talking about this, and we actually talked about looking at doing it last year, just it's a big lift within finances to shift some of these line items around. But we, we decided to go ahead and move forward with this year is that there's times when, you know, if you're a department manager, you're like, okay, I think this is roughly the amount of gallons I'm going to be using. The facilities and energy director provides what we've negotiated for a contract for that fuel. But then there's that, well, let me pad that just a, just a little bit in case I go over. Well, if you multiply that out through multiple departments, that pad increases. And so what we're able to do is not do that, bring it right into one line item. That one line item has a built in cushion based on what we've negotiated for gallon usage, just using that as an example. But this is the same thing as it pertains to, some of the departments have other breakdowns within line items that really that department director does not manage and is not really involved in, it's just, they see it just hit their budget. Well, we have a facilities and energies director that manages all of that. That's where those line items sit. So you'll see those reductions of kind of zeroed out in those line items, but they are in a different budget. And so when you see facilities, you're going to look at it and go, why did this budget increase a million dollars? And that's because we pulled all those items over. Same thing with like vehicle repairs. There's certain vehicle repairs, you know, every department, some of our smaller departments that might have a vehicle or two vehicles that are assigned to them, you know, they all budgeted for, you know, we might need to replace the wipers, we might need to change the tires, we, you know, all these things. We've taken that out, you'll see it in, yeah, none of these departments have, so we've taken that out, you'll see it under public works, under the fleet services. So we have a, we have a fleet pool of vehicles, everything is serviced at public works. And then what we've been doing is hitting certain line items of these different departments. We won't need to do that moving forward. Finance will be able to just have one line item that they draw from. So some of those efficiencies are what we've, we've looked to try to improve within the budget. Questions about timing, schedule, materials?
Questions at all from the council?
All right. Departments are very excited to share what they do. I think that's, you know, they've been working through it. We've tried to, try to keep it limited as best we can, because there's a lot, a lot of these departments do a lot of things, and they could spend a lot of time providing you some information. But we've tried to limit it, limit it to some of the key areas that they've been really focused on. So those departments will come up and provide their presentations. I think clerk is first.
No, I don't know. Okay. Mayor, city counselors, you all know me, but for those that may be watching and are here in the audience, I'm Sue Clement Stilair, city clerk, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the department. Oh, there we go. Okay, sorry. So this is our organization chart. We have three full-time employees and one part-time employee. Obviously, I'm, I'm the city clerk, and Allison Peppin and Denise Spooner, they are both licensed specialists. Allison is appointed as my deputy city clerk, and Denise is the assistant city clerk. Kristi Borget is the part-time employee, and she is a marijuana licensing specialist. Her focus is, is strictly marijuana licensing. Kristi works twenty hours a week. So some of the primary duties, licensing. In twenty twenty three, we issued one hundred and sixty six marriage licenses, two hundred and thirty nine business licenses, sixty six marijuana business licenses, and one hundred and fifty four garage sale permits. We're also responsible for record management, city council agendas, taking minutes, and recording council actions, ordinances, orders and resolves. We have been posting those on our website, so anybody can go in and see the city council actions by year, if somebody wanted to look for a particular action that, that council took. We're responsible for keeping the code of ordinances updated, hosting it on our website, the hard copies. We submit changes quarterly, so those are updated on a quarterly basis. We're responsible for the management of boards and committees, tracking term expirations, posting vacancies on the website. I attend the appointment committee meetings. We also provide notary public and deademist justice services. We help manage Oak Hill Cemetery along with the public works department. We sell cemetery plots, and oftentimes people will inquire, you know, to find out where a relative may be buried in Oak Hill. Vital records. In twenty twenty three, we issued four hundred and twelve birth certificates, two thousand four hundred and ninety death certificates, three hundred and ninety two marriage certificates, and one hundred and eighty six disposition permits. You're probably wondering why we, we've issued so many death certificates compared to birth certificates. We are a hospice town, so, you know, we, if, if somebody, death certificates are available in the city or town where the person passed, or the city or town where they reside, so. And oftentimes if somebody comes in for a death certificate, they'll get multiple copies as opposed to, you know, one or two birth certificates. Election-related duties, elections do take up a lot of our time. We start preparing for an election three months in advance, at least three months in advance actually. Absentee applications are available ninety days before election, an election, and folks can start requesting absentee ballots at that time. We do the absentee voting. You can request absentee ballots in person, through the mail, a telephone request, and that usually starts thirty days before an election. We also have to go to nursing home facilities, assisted living facilities, and we have six that we have to visit whenever there's an election. We also have to test all of the equipment and every ballot style. So we have twelve tabulating machines, we have five A V S machines. The A V S machines are, it's a ballot marking device. It's an accessible ballot marking device for folks that have disabilities. And there were times that during a primary, because we have five, there were five recognized parties in Maine, and we have five wards, three legislative districts, two county commission districts. So we could have up to twenty five different ballot styles during a primary election. And that doesn't include any local ballots that we might have. So we have to test all of that equipment in advance of the election. And the, it, it's, it's a lot. The tabulating machines are very heavy, they're bulky, so, you know, it, it's, it's a lot. We also prepare the election paperwork, supplies and training materials. I offer training every time there's an election. You know, most of it is the same, but every election is just a little bit different, so I want to make sure the election workers are up to date with, you know, the type of election and, you know, stay on top of the, the training. Let's see. We also have to prepare all the supplies for the wardens and ward clerks at the polling places. Polling place setup today, we, we went out to, with the public work crews to set up the polling places. Processing absentee ballots, we are allowed to process up to a week before the election. This election, we didn't have to do that because it's been fairly quiet as far as absentee ballot requests. Nomination papers, when there's a, a local election, we issue nomination papers. Because we're a municipality with fifteen thousand, a population of fifteen thousand people or more, we have to also manage the campaign finance reporting for candidates. We validate petitions, so. Um, we validate petitions, um, so, um, yeah, it's, it's quite a bit. So I wanted to, because I have requested funding, uh, in the, um, CIP, I just wanted to give you an example of some of the, uh, record restoration and preservation work that we've been doing. Uh, so this is an example of the, one of the books that we had restored. And then this slide is, um, these are birth records, um, that have been stored in accordion, uh, file folders, um, they're not in protective sleeves at all, um, and, you know, when you are constantly handling them, they start to deteriorate. Uh, so that is, um, a photo after of the, um, uh, the records after they, uh, they do something like, uh, deacidify the paper and then that, that they put them in protective sleeves and, um, they're in these nice books, so we're not actually handling the record. If somebody requests, um, you know, one of those records, we just, um, keep it in the sleeve and then we can, um, copy it on the certified paper. Yeah.
All right, so I'm just waiting for the man behind the curtain to swap it over here, so I can show you. Um, I don't know if he knew that we were ready now, but...
Okay.
All right, so just real quick, I just wanted to point out when Phil said that it looks a little bit different with the portal and our central budget entry, this is what our central budget entry looks like in Munis, this is where we add in the numbers. Uh, what you're used to seeing is something similar to this, this is that bu- budget portal that's on the website, available to the public, and that's what you're going to have access to, but as councilors you'll have, uh, a login, so you can actually drill down into that detail that he was talking about. So that's what he means when he says it's different, it just looks different, all the numbers are the same, it's not really different, it's just that, uh, the layout is, is a little, a little smaller, but a little different as well. Uh, also in the, um, departments in the portal, it doesn't show their revenue. Uh, in Central, which is where we're going to be showing you tonight, it shows their revenue, so it looks like an offset, so that total amount that's on the, the sheets that you have, or that total budget request for the department, is offset by their revenue in there, and I can tell you what that revenue offset is if you're, if you're curious about hers.
Okay, so, um, first we have regular salaries. Salaries obviously would be, uh, in the clerk's, um, office, salaries is probably the biggest driver. Aside from that, it would be elections. Overtime, that is for clerk staff. We work a lot of hours during elections, so, uh, sometimes they choose to take, um, comp time, but other times they will opt for, uh, overtime. Advertising, that is for, uh, publishing public notices, uh, where required by law, um, for, uh, to post certain notices, uh, including election notices. Okay, and then, um, this line item, uh, is for, uh, hosting the code on our website, updates to the code, that's, um, on the website, and hard copies that we keep in our office. And wardens and ward clerks, that is, it's not just wardens and ward clerks, it's, um, election staff, temporary staff, um, we, um, typically have somebody come into the office to assist us in the office because we're extremely busy with absentee, um, ballots and, um, depending on the type of election, we would have, we could have anywhere between 20 and 100, um, election officials working the elections. We have deputy registrars at each of the polling places, um, and, like I said, wardens, ward clerks, you have to have a certain number of election clerks, you have to maintain a balance of Democrats and Republicans and, um, so, and then, uh, we, there was another increase, January 1st, the minimum wage increased again, so I've included that. And then we have training and tuition. It's really important that we, um, you know, support professional growth and development, um, the laws are always changing, so it's really important that staff stays up to date on, uh, law changes and procedural changes, um, so, um, and then we have, um, travel and mileage, most of the training is done in either Augusta, Portland, or Bangor, uh, and, um, that also includes costs, uh, for, uh, conferences. The Secretary of State's office typically, um, has a conference for, uh, registration, voter registration and, um, election officials, uh, so that's included in that line item. And dues and subscriptions, that is, um, the Sun Journal. Uh, we, um, we're members of the Main Town and City Clerks Association. Uh, you, um, have scholarship opportunities when you are a member, um, of the Main Town and City Clerks Association, uh, and also, um, the savings on, you know, by joining, um, the association, you save money on, um, your, your workshops. Okay, and, um, voter supplies, that is, uh, the, that includes the cost of, uh, printing ballots and miscellaneous, uh, election supplies. Voting machines, that covers the, uh, cost to lease the machines, um, programming the machines for every election, uh, and, like I said, we have 12, uh, tabulating machines and then the five accessible voting machines. Um, and there's also a cost to have the, um, accessible electronic, uh, ballots programmed, and I think that's $100 per ballot style for that, um, so that line includes all of those. And that's it, right? You know, like Phil said, uh, typically we have two elections a year. This year we've got five, um, but, um, yeah, so, uh... It's been a lot. Are there any questions?
Counsel Pat.
Yes, thank you. I do have a question about the salary increases.
Yep.
Obviously, tw- 20% seems, I, I'm only looking at one year prior, or two years prior, but it's the biggest bump. Is that a, a catch-up in, in step increases, or is there a, a measurable thing that's occurring between this year and next with that request?
So we did build in a 5% COLA, just as an estimate for now, uh, but that is what's built in at this time, so, part of that increase is that 5% based off of current salaries.
I think probably what you're also seeing is the switchboard, uh, if you said you were comparing like two years ago. Um, so the switchboard position, um, was brought back in, uh, last year, and that switchboard position is split between, um, the clerk's office, but also rec. So you'll see the other half of that position in the rec department.
So, the clerk's office is actually on, on balance four FTEs? Right, right, because Sue showed us three and a half and with the switchboard, so there's actually four full-time equivalents in that salary line, okay. Any other questions? Yeah, Counsel Walker.
Could you tell us approximately how many people you train each year for this, for elections?
For elections? Yeah, it, it, um, again, it, it depends on what type of election, you know, a general election like, uh, November, we're probably gonna have close to 100, um, people that we're gonna be training. Uh, for an election like, uh, the one, um, tomorrow, um, we had approximately 40 people in the training.
Thank you, and the other thing is, how many other department people do you have to depend on to help you get this all set up and then taken down?
For this election, there were two, uh, two folks from PW helping today, uh, to help set up, and they will be in early tomorrow to help set up this room, deliver everything to the polling locations, and then at the end of the, the night, they'll help break everything down, uh, bring things back to Auburn Hall. Uh, in November, I believe they're gonna have four, um, people, and, um, as far as, I don't have, for, for this election, I don't have any, uh, other outside help from other departments, but in November, they probably will have a lot of other staff members helping out.
Can you tell me in, in approximately hours, what do you think that, like this one, will it be 12 hours, 24 hours worth of other labor?
With the training and, um, election day, it's probably, probably gonna be 17 hours per, per person, but when I say that, there are some, some folks that only work half a day, so, you know, but the full-time equivalent would be about 17 hours for each position. Yeah.
Okay, last, you've been around quite a while, watching, uh, how many votes that come in, what is our percentage on election year for president? Uh, and then what do you think our percentage will be for this, this vote?
Uh, so, a presidential, typically the turnout is around 72%. Uh, I would, I would say anywhere between 70 and 75%. I believe the last presidential, we had a 75% turnout, but most general election years, uh, for the presidential, it's right around 72%. For this election, uh, four years ago, we had a 35% turnout, but I'm expecting that to be less based on the number of absentee requests we've, we've received, so, um, you know, it's always hard to gauge, but I expect it's probably gonna be less than the 35% that we saw four years ago.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, Sue, I just have one, so, the, this wardens and ward clerk line, I'm assuming this is sick- secular over a four-year cycle depending on the type of elections, so the decrease i- in next year is because it's a non-presidential year and you don't need as much assistance, is that correct?
Well, this budget does include the presidential.
Uh, right.
Yeah, it includes the presidential, but, um, June, the fo- the following June, it should be, uh, just the school budget, possibly a state referendum, and that's always a low turnout.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Your breakdown's on the screen. So it's 11,875 for presidential.
Yeah, okay.
Five, uh, just under 50, 500 for school, and that potential for, uh, a state referendum. And then, then Sue also brings in that temporary staff.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Great, thank you very much. And, um, IT is next.
Now I'm waiting for the man behind the curtain to go back to the PowerPoint, so...
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Jill Cunningham, the IT Director. Um, our department has four staff members. We have a network administrator, IT support, and software support, and myself. Um, some of the things that we do, we handle networking, software support, PC support, and cybersecurity. Um, networking, we maintain the internal network, we manage the wide area network with Lewiston, 911, and the county. We do security camera maintenance and installation, we do fiber installation citywide, and we manage our city phone system. For software support, we do, um, daily support, we do weekly, uh, support patch installations, annual upgrades, we implement new softwares and manage users and permissions. Uh, we provide daily support to PCs, we do virtual meetings, we handle hardware associated with daily tasks performed within the entire city. We perform PC upgrades and install all softwares on the PCs rolled out. Uh, daily, we monitor security logs and all associated logs for cybersecurity activity. We perform annual trainings and incident response, uh, training with our cybersecurity partner, who also helps us maintain proper policies in an always-changing cybersecurity market. They perform our first phishing campaign this year, and we were pleased that 90% of the staff passed the test, which is a huge number, just goes to show how well the staff are doing here and how well we're training them. Some of the major projects that IT has done, we onboarded the Auburn-Lewiston Airport onto the Auburn network. We've replaced the asset software for Public Works and facilities. We've onboarded the entire Public Works team onto our email system, which that allows them access to HR docs, the asset software, and ESS for payroll and W2 information. We also completed the migration of our assessing software from on-prem to the cloud. We took over the management of cameras and the security system. We've installed three new security cameras, upgraded two security panels, activated 11 miles of fiber, and performed pho- our phone controller upgrade this year. In '24, we plan to onboard and integrate the school department into our financial software, Munis. We plan to replace our permitting and licensing software, which will then give two citizen portals for our asset software and our permitting software online where they can access it from home. We also plan to install more security cameras citywide. We would like to upgrade our camera software platform, this is where our, um, capital request is coming from, to do these major upgrades. And then we'd like to add a fiber run at the Auburn-Lewiston Airport to implement a new security plan for that team. Some of our budget drivers are the annual software licensing, that cre- increase anywhere from 3% to 5% every year. Hardware costs are getting higher and higher, it's harder to get, um, hardware equipment, plus we've been increasing all equipment citywide, um, so we would like to have a 25% increase in that budget line. We'd like to increase our bandwidth where everything is cloud-based, having a faster speed for staff would make their workload much easier. And we have an increase to our PS General to cover security camera maintenance that was moved over from facilities to IT for management. Some of the IT by the numbers, we did 1,374 help desk tickets in '23. We onboarded 115 employees, which included school maintenance, um, all the Public Works team, all onto our email platform system. We issued out 60 new desk phones, we did 11 miles of fiber, we did 70 new PCs and laptops were deployed, and 366 email accounts were managed, including City and 911. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
I, I just have one, uh, Great Falls TV, what happened to that? Where'd it go? How did it fall away?
Um, I don't think it's fallen away, we still push out the broadcast here on Great Falls TV, and between the communications team and myself, we still manage the equipment downstairs.
Counsel Pat.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had a question, it's probably in the accounting software, but what, um, what amount of revenue, like sponsorship revenue, do you bring in to offset the special event costs? Or is that a different, a different department?
Next one.
Okay.
Give me a great question for her. She's ready, she's ready to answer it. We didn't put it in order, did we?
Counsel Allen.
Quick question on-
Quick question on the bandwidth. Could you give some examples of, like, slow, is it like public service, like, you know, like the tax collection department, that sort of thing where their equipment's slow, so it's kind of a clunky?
So, citywide, you have to have the correct equipment in each data closet throughout each building, like, for example, this building, each floor has its own data closet that's pushing out a specific speed. So, for hardware, we want to make sure we upgrade the hardware to push out the correct speeds, and then we want to have the more bandwidth coming into the building so that it can get dispersed and everyone can have a good experience. Yeah.
Other question? Council Platts.
I did have a question on the correct budget here. With the installation, the request, it's probably, I think, it sounds like CIP request, but for cameras, citywide, is there any connection to that and possible cost savings, like for the PD with patrols and et cetera? Like, do those cameras save us money if they're in the right locations in the city?
Yes. So, some of the things that we want to do is utilize the abilities of the cameras that we're not using now. So, we're looking for a new software that will give the police access to cameras in their cars, which they currently don't have. So, in, you know, an awful incident that happened back in October, they would be able to more quickly react to things and use cameras. So, as we expand the cameras in the city, and then we can expand the software, then they would just have a better, quicker reaction.
So, even if it's not direct cost savings, there's efficiencies?
It's efficiencies we're looking for more than cost savings. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just one follow-up on the network. Do you anticipate similar questions, some, some cost savings in terms of gained efficiencies from your experience in your?
I, I expect people will be able to more efficiently do their jobs. So, right now, we have some clunky softwares, and we're looking for them to be able to work more efficiently in the PD and throughout facilities as things and incidents happen here. So, that's what we're looking to do.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, you spoke about an online portal for citizens to, for permits. When do you expect that to go live?
We're hoping sometime this spring.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Other questions? So, I just had one follow-up question. You talked about needing the additional bandwidth because of the cloud-based services. So, these various enterprise applications that are being run here, such as Munis or the new asset system, how many of those applications are you maintaining your own server infrastructure for doing on-premise, and how much of this is in the cloud now?
All of our major softwares are in the cloud now. We don't have any, we have a couple small softwares that are on-prem, but anything major with major needs is in the cloud.
And your cloud hosting, is this being provided by the application provider, or are you hosting these in your own cloud space?
The majority of them, the vendor is maintaining them. The only one that we still do is GIS. We have an AWS server for that one. All the others are on the vendor.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the last workshop item is communication.
Liz asked to go last, in case we're short for time, she could just move right through her.
For communications professional, I get awfully nervous about these things. Let's see. Ignore the slide count, I'll go through them quickly. Mayor and Council, I'm delighted to be here with you, although anxious, am happy to be here with you tonight to talk about the Communications and Community Engagement Department. If you don't know me yet, I'm Liz Allen, I am your Director of Communications. In partnership with the City Manager's Office and this body, the Communications Department is Auburn's central source for information and communications. Our highest priorities are timely, accurate communications, consistent branding and tone. You'll see every budget presentation you get from all of our departments are going to have the same template, so it's that kind of consistency we, we like to have. And the presentation of honest, meaningful content that tells the story of Auburn with one clear and trustworthy voice. I was a team of one for a while, but thankfully, our talented communications team has grown since 2022 to include our city's downtown coordinator, Jennifer Bonig, who's in the room this evening. Jen coordinates our city's three signature events in the downtown, New Year's Auburn, the Auburn Blues and Brews Festival, and the Auburn Lobster Festival, which is coming up this spring on May 11th. Jen also works to build and nurture relationships with businesses, nonprofits, community groups, and residents in our downtown district, quite often lending her support and guidance to community events and organizations. In addition, the addition of our Communications Assistant, that's Abby Boran, has greatly improved our city's communication efforts with consistent engaging social media pages, more up-to-date website content, a fresh new perspective, lots of great new photos and videos, and improved community outreach and engagement efforts. These very talented individuals demonstrate their enthusiasm, their skill, their dedication to our city every single day. So, like many other city departments, we do have a mission statement, and it's focused on compelling messaging, positive engagement, and making meaningful connections within the community. As you know, one of the 11 final strategic recommendations that emerged from our 2019 strategic plan was to establish a citywide communications plan. Some of you were part of that effort, and you'll remember that this was prioritized within almost every single work group and goal statement in the plan. So, the communications team accomplishes our mission by following this communications plan. If you haven't read it or looked through it, I encourage you to do so, it's right on our website. This document is key to our successful connection to our community, and it's very important to my team. So, what do we do? As you can see, we do it all, from branding and marketing to shouting Auburn's accomplishments and successes from the rooftops, from programs to a podcast, from grand openings to graphic design. My team participates in almost every facet of municipal government. We support each and every city department, board, and committee. We connect with residents, and we tell the story of Auburn. Aside from salaries, our department budget drivers this year include our community engagement efforts, our special events, and our general professional line item. As a budget driver, community engagement is at the heart of what we do. This account is used for print and social media advertising, for showcasing the city at local trade shows, like the Business-to-Business Event that's coming up, hiring events. It's used for the creation of signs and plaques. I think you'll start to see more consistent signage throughout the city in our different parks and memorial spots. It covers swag and the giveaways that we like to help, use to help get our brand out there and boost community pride through decals for people's cars, et cetera, and more than that. I have not requested an increase in this line item for FY '25. Another budget driver for my department is our special events. So, other than the website and social media, I'm proud to say that our team is probably best known for our three signature events. These are high-visibility, high-impact, free citywide special events, and in my opinion, they're incredible. I'm proud to report that these events bring around 10,000 people to the heart of our downtown every year. It's really something. There are also some smaller, yet equally impactful, events and programs that my team makes possible, things like our charming shops at Anniversary Park, the Christmas Shopping Village, our Story Walk panels that are along the Riverwalk, the Summer Acoustic Concert Series, and, and lots more. Lastly, there are several much-loved community events that the city supports, the Liberty Festival, Balloon Festival, and the Auburn Community Concert Band are all funded through my department. So, I'm going to brag a bit, our signature event success, our signature events have gained a reputation for being among the best in Maine, and that's something we should all be proud of. These events draw each from 3,000 to 6,000 attendees, and they help make our city a destination. Our events are also an economic driver, supporting local businesses, bands, restaurants, hotels, and more. We're very focused on collecting and reporting all the data that we can gather at these. As you can see, our brand and our event had 1.3 million impressions and nearly 10,000 website visits for New Year's Auburn alone. It's pretty impressive. That's what I call engagement. City Manager and I thought you might like to take in some of the budgets behind our signature events. So, here are the numbers. For example, last fall's Blues and Brews Festival cost $27,600. We were able to offset that expense with help from our generous corporate partners, so some of those revenues we bring in from local businesses that are very generous with us. We budgeted $18,000 for that event and came in just under. The first annual Auburn Lobster Festival took place last spring. It was a brand-new event for us, the result of an April Fool's Day post, a social media post that went viral. The 2023 event was not budgeted for, it was one of those things we kind of absorbed and took on. It is accounted for in this year's budget and will take place May 11th. Last up is New Year's Auburn, our largest event by far. As you can see, we budgeted $50,000 for this event. Costs came in at around $45,000, and we had some sponsor dollars again to offset those expenses. This year, we did add a drone show. It was not inexpensive, it was around $37,000, but it was a huge success for this community. I cannot tell you how much positive feedback we got on that. I will add that this, this was paid purely through sponsor revenues that we had carried forward from other events where we hadn't spent the full amount. No city dollars were spent for the drone show. To your question, Councilor Platts, it's important to note that we do get generous, generous financial support from our, for our events from our community partners. These local businesses believe in our events, they believe in our city, and they support us, and we are so grateful. Some of our current partnerships are ending. We put together packages that take a sponsor through all three events for a solid year so that we're not constantly going back to them and asking for more. So, some of those are expiring soon, so Jen and I are going to be hitting the pavement and courting and soliciting sponsors to, as Jen says, try to sell our faces off and get more sponsors to join the team. So, we've set a goal of raising $50,000 in revenue for the upcoming event season. Podcast, one of our newest engagement tools, is our official City of Auburn podcast, which is Absolutely Auburn. We launched this event, this effort in July of last year. Since then, we've pushed out 15, I think, exceptional episodes on various fascinating topics. All of our guests have been city employees or elected officials. I believe everybody on the dais today has been a guest, and I hope you enjoyed getting to know Abby and Jen a little better. My thanks to each of you for appearing and sharing your love for this great city. There have been, since our launch, more than 800 downloads of everything you've had to say and a few others, and we've created more than 450 minutes of content all about our city. To take a peek at what that's cost, Absolutely Auburn is a great example of huge impact with minimal cost. The podcast was fairly simple and fairly inexpensive to venture to launch. Startup costs were about $640 for all the equipment, the microphones, the headsets, the mixing board, et cetera. And the annual fee to host all those episodes is about $300 a year, and that gets pushed out to Google Podcasts, Apple Podcasts, iHeartRadio, Spotify, Amazon, places like that. Our website, so with 230 sessions and more than 500,000 page views last year, our website, which is auburnmain.gov, remains the primary source of information for all things Auburn. Very proud of our social media following that we've built over the years. To my knowledge, this might just be a Liz fact, but I'm pretty sure Auburn was one of the first municipalities in Maine to have a presence on Facebook and other social media sites, and it really has served us well. It's a wonderful way to connect with the community. We have more than 11,000 followers on the City of Auburn Facebook page. That has been exponential growth, more than 187% increase in our followers. And then all of the other pages for different city departments and our different events, et cetera, and initiatives have, that adds another 47,000 followers, which is a 54% increase since 2021. We also have a couple thousand email and text alert subscribers, so we're connecting in all kinds of ways. So, I hope I've given you a good idea of what your communications and engagement team does. Like you, we're always looking for new ways to connect and engage with residents and visitors and our businesses. I will add that sadly, our current website is that it's probably past its useful life. It was well over 10, probably closer to 12 years since we launched it. And that's, that's a long time for a website, so it's, we're kind of limping along at this point. So, my plan, I hope, is for you to see a new website from the City of Auburn within the next six months, maybe less. And as Jill mentioned, you'll see incredible new resident-reported and requested-type portals to, to really make that process of engaging and meeting the needs of our community smoother. So, those will be live soon. So, on behalf of Jen and Abby and myself, thanks so much for your time. Any questions?
Questions from the council?
Cover yours.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll adjourn the work session and reconvene at 7:00 PM for the council meeting.
No, I mean, like, what information you would reach out with.
We'll call the March 4, 2024, city council meeting to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councillors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary. I'm an Auburn City Councillor-at-Large.
Rick Whiting, Ward 1, City Councillor.
Tim Cowan, Ward 2, City Councillor.
Jeff Harmon, Mayor, and I would note that our Ward 3 councillor, Milks, is out of state this evening and not available.
Ben Weisner, Ward 4, City Councillor.
Leroy Walker, Ward 5.
Adam Platt, City Council-at-Large.
Phil Kroll, City Manager.
The first agenda item is consent items. We have appointments to the Registration Appeals Board, wardens and warden clerks for the upcoming primary election, and holding the special election date for School Committee-at-Large. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Move by Council Walker. Second. Second by Councilor Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Six having voted, yes, excuse me, six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is minutes of the February 20 regular city council meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Move by Council Walker, seconded by Council Whiting. Are there any errors or corrections? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is communications, and we'll have a presentation by Mr. Cousins on the
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I don't have a detailed presentation on this, but I wanted to make sure that the council is aware of our involvement in the FERC process. We've been involved for a couple of years now with, almost two years, with the Lewiston Falls project, and we did have sort of a warm-up with the Upper and Lower Barker dams to get used to the process. I feel that we are, you know, we're sort of the underdogs, I think, in this process. There's very well-compensated consultants and, you know, a lot of money in paying for support from the hydropower owner, hiring people that this is what they do full-time and go through that process. I think that we've been effective so far in the two smaller projects in getting some amenities out of the projects where FERC requires that the hydropower facility balance the needs for generating power with other things like water quality, with recreation, that there's equal consideration given to those other impacts to the river, how it changes whether or not somebody could through paddle on a river and providing portages or investment in recreational access, could be in maintenance or boat launches along our Riverwalk, and we are advocating for additional access along the river, on the Auburn side of the river, and doing that in coordination with staff from the City of Lewiston, as well as some other regional or even national stakeholders that I detailed in the memo. Really wanted to give you that written correspondence, just introduce the idea. I did meet with local stakeholders last week, had a call with FERC this week just about process and how we best plug in to advocate for the needs of the city. I do want you to know that we have very good background documentation. We have a good recreational chapter in the comprehensive plan. We have a good recreation component in the New Auburn Master Plan, our strategic plan. So I think we have the policy documents in place. But just so you're familiar with the fact that we're in this process, we're working through it, I wanted you to have that background, and then over the next month or two, we'll be back with a more detailed correspondence of what we're planning to submit to FERC with the group of stakeholders we've been working with. And I guess as one last point, I think we are much stronger in the process working with the stakeholders. So far, the group of stakeholders that we've been working with have been able to come to consensus and, you know, support things that were specific needs of Auburn. In past discussions, a decade or so ago, some negotiations around recreational access and river improvements related to the dam upstream at Gulf Island, we really were advocating for different things among the stakeholders, and some of those even conflicted with each other, and it really left us in a not-as-strong-a-position to have FERC mandate requirements for Brookfield to follow with then-next era, now Brookfield. So I think we have a good stakeholder group. We'll continue to work those issues. I can answer any questions, and we'll be back with comments as we develop those for the latest draft license application.
Questions from the council? Council Platts?
Yes, a quick question on, has the stakeholder list changed? I see here in 2021, it was Auburn, Lewiston, American Whitewater, Appleish Mountain Club, Grow LA, Maine Council, Trout Unlimited. Is that the same stakeholder group currently?
Essentially, we also have Andrew Skoggin, Riverside Watershed Council, and some people have sort of come in for parts of it and out for other parts of it. We have been working with the National Park Service as well. So we've worked with other state and federal agencies to get advice from their full-time staff that deal with this regionally, but the stakeholder list is, it changes at each step in the process where somebody does or doesn't show up, but it's essentially remained the same with the core participants.
Other questions?
Mr. Cousins, if the public wants to have input about the outcomes, how would they provide input to your office?
So we brought the issues to the Conservation Commission in the past, and I think we could do that again and host a public meeting with them. We're also available by email or phone. We don't have any kind of a formal portal for accepting that, but there has been recreational user surveys performed by the hydropower operator, and we're happy to talk with anybody about those needs. And there's a lot of information on the, if you go to the City of Auburn website, auburnmain.gov, the Planning and Permitting Department, one of our plans and projects is rivers and hydropower, and there's a lot of details there if people want to become familiar with what's been put together so far. And as I said, we're always happy to take email or phone calls, comments.
Anything else from the council? Council Whiting?
I know with the Barker, lower and upper, there were a series of meetings. I think there were some sidewalks. Are they going to be the same sorts of things for this one?
There will be. There's been a series of study meetings to look at aesthetics. They pulled together an aesthetic study team of stakeholders from Lewiston and Auburn. There's been a recreational initial meeting. That study is continuing into the summer. There's been a lot of survey work around that. There have been water quality studies, fisheries studies, and there has been engagement with a limited number of stakeholders by Brookfield for those, picked from the two cities and other just regional groups that have expressed an interest. People can sign up for those notifications and be included in that pool. There will be, around the time of the final license application, that's when FERC really steps in and becomes part of the process. We had advocated for a different licensing process that involves FERC right from the beginning that we were not successful in getting. I did talk with FERC staff last week and again today. Their involvement really increases at that final license application, and that's when they'll come out and start to do public engagement and hold what they call a scoping meeting that will be open to any and all from the public. And I'd say from here, where we have a draft license application through this next phase of the final license application, and then when FERC steps in is really sort of the meat of the process where you can actually start to understand what FERC may require. Leading up to it, it was fairly disappointing to see the draft license application basically just assuming that the existing facilities are adequate and that there's no need for new facilities. We feel differently. We've advocated differently, but in talking with FERC staff, it's really not unusual to start there with the draft license application. We can make sure we publicize those scoping meetings and other meetings in the future as well.
Anything else from the council? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is the first open session of the evening. Any members of the public that would like to address the council about any issue related to city business that doesn't appear on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close the open session and move on to unfinished business. The first item is Ordinance 0501162024, Amending Chapter 60, Article 15, reinstating the Zoning Board of Appeals Ordinance. This is a public hearing and second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Council Gary and seconded by Council Whiting. We'll open up the public hearing. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the council on this matter, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, the public hearing will be closed. Discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Weisner?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Platts?
Yes.
Councilor Gary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Cowan?
Yes.
Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. Is there any other unfinished business to come before the council? Not, we'll move on to new business. First item is Order 3003042024, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for property located at 150 Minut Avenue. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Move by Council Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Cowan. Discussion by the coun, excuse me, we should probably provide a little bit more information for the public. The property at 150 Minut Avenue is the Old Jimmy's Restaurant location and Webster Trading Post on the end, on the Elm Street end, and the intent here is to acquire the blighted building and demolish that to provide room for a future Minut Avenue Elm Street intersection improvement. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Discussion by the council. Council Platts?
Yes, I just had the question, I guess, to pose to the council or to the city manager. Is it a, I feel a little trepidation voting for this without having the purchase and sale price listed. Is that something that's appropriate to be in the public record, or is that because this is real estate, it's not?
Thanks, Mayor. So, yeah, great question. I think that we have, if you look over, you know, different buildings that we may have purchased or buildings that we're selling, really determines whether or not do we have the hard price in here. We'll negotiate right up until the moment we sign this, and so this is why we, on items like this, we don't necessarily put that into the order unless it's a fixed amount and we know what it is, then we'll push that out. We'll wait to see if we can negotiate that. Councils received that information in executive session, given staff a window to negotiate with. These are the funds for this, probably just to make sure that folks understand this. This is Community Development Block Grant Funds, which in our CBG application, or our program rather, the funds are there to clearly identify removing blighted areas, and so those are the funds that'll be used. They will require a modification to that budget moving forward that will be done afterwards. And so that's the process. If we have the fixed amount, we'll put it in. Like you have an item that, further down where we are, selling two properties, that item, we put the amount in because it was based on sealed amounts that were provided to the city, and so we're going with the highest amount. Yeah, great question, though.
Other questions? Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a cap on how far we'll go in order to obtain this property?
The council provided that in the executive session.
Any other questions? Council Whiting?
Just a comment that it's my hope that we can, in addition to making improvements to the intersection, improving egress for the Edward Little High School students that cross a busy road, also get some recoupment of cost through the resale of a portion of the property, which can then be, once again, a taxable piece of property.
Other questions or comments? Council Cowan?
I just wanted to add to that comment, just point out that this opportunity, I'm excited because it does fit in with two supporting plans that are established for Auburn in terms of fixing this area, so it's, I think it's a great opportunity and I'm looking forward to the changes.
Other questions? Council Walker?
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say, and it needs to be done and done
Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next agenda item is item number two, Order 3103042024, authorizing the execution of an amended intermodal facility lease. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Then moved by Council Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Weisner. Is there any public comment? Any member of the public would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment. Discussion by the council. Council ready for the questions? The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion is adopted. Agenda item number three, Order 3203042024, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement for property located at 14 and 16 Newbury Street. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Move by Council Walker, is there a second? Seconded by Council Whiting. Public comment? If there's any member of the public would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment. Discussion by the council. Council Platts?
I wanted to ask how these properties were originally obtained by the city.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, Jake, come on up. I think it's, Kelsey might know, there's some of them were tax-acquired. Were both tax-acquired?
Yeah, no, so 14 was deeded to the city and 16 was tax-acquired, and we did follow the LD 101 process of notifying the previous owner. They decided not to respond to have us file in that, or list the property in a certain manner, although we did use... manner, although we did use, um, a real estate, a real estate agent for it, which is what that process would have been.
Right. It was marketed, uh, then it was also marketed through Fontaine Family Realty. It was Bill Bergeron who won the RFP to provide those services.
Right, it was marketed and then there was competitive bids and, um, the city selected the, um, highest offer, is that correct?
We did, so we, um, we had listed it for a couple of months and there were three offers. Um, one was very low at five thousand for just one of the lots. Another one was very low, uh, was somebody wanted to build some tiny homes, uh, and he offered seventy-five hundred dollars for both lots. Um, we did strongly consider that because of the whole tiny home concept, but as we looked at his, uh, background, we didn't necessarily think he could complete the project. He wasn't a builder or anything, and then we settled on this one, which is the highest, uh, offer at twenty-five thousand.
Other, other questions or comments, Council Geary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doesn't this, these properties abut the property for Bonnie Park?
Um, they don't abut the property, there's a, like a driveway, a parking, uh, access road in between, in between, and there's a house right be, right there that has that access road to it.
Because I know at one time we were thinking of keeping some of that land so that we could do some sort of access point.
Yeah, and I think this was discussed back when we seeked permission to sell the property, seek, uh, permission to market the property, and ultimately, as the city council has settled on, we would go ahead and sell it.
Other questions, comments by the council? The, um, so, there's conditions, is that correct? There's conditions in the sale of this to build, um, housing within some period of time?
Yeah.
And there's, um, terms that would allow the city to regain the property if, if those terms weren't met, is that correct?
Yeah, something we're doing a little differently than we had in the past when selling some of these smaller lots. Um, you know, when we sell bigger properties, we put clawbacks and things, and we, we had our, uh, the attorneys draw up some language where we can just plug in some dates that's, that, um, they need to begin, begin the permitting process within a certain amount of time, they need to start building within a certain amount of time, and if they don't do those things, we have the ability to clawback the property. And we hadn't done that in the past on some of these little sites, and as we looked at the history, we thought we needed to.
Other questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next agenda item is number four, resolve zero one zero three zero four twenty twenty four, responding to the planning board request for information on the delayed applicability date for ordinance zero one zero one zero two twenty twenty four. Fresh the council's memory, this is an item that the council previously sent to the planning board for review and recommendation, and, uh, after the planning board reviewed this, they returned through staff, um, a request for additional information and clarification, and that is set forth in the resolve. Is there, uh, any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Oh, yep, sorry. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council Geary, seconded by Councilor Walker. Any member of the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is item number five, ordinance zero seven zero three zero four twenty twenty four, removing appendix A from Auburn's Code of Ordinances. This is a public hearing and a first reading. Appendix A is, for the public's clarification, is the fee schedule portion of the ordinances. Is there a motion? Moved by Council Whiting, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Walker. Any member of the public that would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, discussion by the council. The council ready for the question? This vote will be by roll call, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Weisner?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Platts?
Yes.
Councilor Geary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Cowan?
Yes.
Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted at the first reading. The next agenda item is item number six, ordinance zero eight zero three zero four twenty twenty four, adopting language that was inadvertently removed from the Code of Ordinances at chapter fifty-two, traffic and vehicles, section fifty-two dash two thirty-eight and fifty-two dash two thirty-nine. It's a public hearing and a first reading. This item, uh, two years ago, the council was, um, cleaning up some ordinance language that was also contained in state statutes and thus was superfluous, this was swept up in that and inadvertently, um, removed. It was brought to the city's attention, uh, recently, uh, due to an enforcement action when it was discovered that the necessary authorization to post roads in Auburn had been removed from the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Cowan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Walker. Is there any member of the public that would like to, um, make comment at the public hearing? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, discussion by the council. The council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Weisner?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Platts?
Yes.
Councilor Geary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Cowan?
Yes.
Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted at the first reading. I might, uh, suggest to the council that you consider suspending the rules to take second reading tonight as, um, in the ordinance, roads are posted starting March first, and given the current weather, uh, it would be quite some time here before we could move forward, so is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Whiting and seconded by Councilor Walker to suspend the rules for the purpose of a second reading. For, I would also suggest that, uh, the council might consider, uh, amending this motion for immediate effect so that the, um, ordinance, uh, does not have to take five days in order to take effect, it would take, immediately take effect upon council action. Would there be a motion?
Motion to move immediately.
Moved by Council Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Whiting.
Point of order, um, I don't think we got the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, sorry. So, um, uh, the vote for suspension of the rules will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, six being more than two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Uh, so now, sorry, we'll move on, uh, Council Walker.
Yes, we want to do the vote immediately.
Councilor Walker has moved to amend the motion so that they'll be effective immediately, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilor Whiting. Is there discussion on the amendment? Council Geary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you please tell the audience that are sitting here at home exactly what we're trying to do?
Sure.
What we're trying to prevent and how this is gonna help?
Thank you, so, ordinance, ordinance adoption requires two readings, they usually at two separate meetings, in which case, we have passed the first reading, we would require a second reading, which would take place two weeks from tonight. The issue at hand here is the traffic ordinances that we're reinstating are regarding posting of roads for overweight vehicles during the springtime season to, uh, avoid, uh, excessive road damage. That usually takes place, uh, posting starts on March first, since we're after March first, and, uh, especially since we have very warm and wet weather at this time, uh, delaying the implementation of this would, um, um, forestall any enforcement action, uh, at this point, um, until two weeks, but we suspended the rules, if the council acts on a, on the second reading, uh, it, it would take effect five days from now. So Councilor Walker's amendment to the motion to have immediate effect would allow this, uh, ordinance to be reinstated immediately upon passage by the council this evening. Thank, thank you, uh, for that, Council Geary. Any other questions? Council Geary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we, it, since we haven't done it till now, what's gonna happen to those companies or people that are already there and they wanna get out of their, you know, take their equipment home?
So they would be under the current, uh, uh, they're, they're allowed to move equipment when the road temperature is below freezing, so there's often this time of year overnight, uh, uh, temperatures that dip below freezing that allow them to move the equipment across posted roads.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council Walker?
Uh, not a question, but this is something that's needed because the heavy trucks really break up the, uh, under asphalt roads that really don't have the thickness for them.
Any other questions? So the, uh, vote is on the amendment for, uh, immediate effect. The vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll return to the main motion as amended, which would be to adopt the language that was inadvertently removed from the Code of Ordinances at chapter fifty-two, traffic and vehicles, section fifty-two, two thirty-eight and fifty-two, two thirty-nine, to be effective immediately. Is there any further questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call, the clerk will call, excuse me, Council Geary?
Could you please tell the audience and people sitting here what this is, we're trying to do?
Excuse me?
Sorry, can you please tell those at home and those sitting here what we're doing if they haven't had a chance to go online and get the schedule of what we're doing?
Uh, yes, this is, as we previously discussed, this is reinstating, uh, traffic ordinances that were inadvertently removed, and, um, the city is unable to, the city has posted roads, but they're really not authorized to post roads without, um, some ordinance to do so, and, uh, no enforcement action is currently available on our posted roads, and the idea here is to reinstate this, um, and the suspension of the rules to get to a second reading and making this effective immediately would cause the ordinance to be back in effect tonight, should the council, uh, have an affirmative vote on the pending motion.
Thank you.
Is the council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Weisner?
Yes.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Platts?
Yes.
Councilor Geary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Cowan?
Yes.
Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The eject, uh, excuse me, the next agenda item is item seven, order thirty-three dash zero three zero four twenty twenty four, directing staff to draft, uh, draft zoning map and text ordinance amendments to chapter sixty, zoning, and prepare the items for public hearing and a recommendation by the Auburn Planning Board pursuant to chapter sixty, article seventeen, division two, amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map. And to remind the council and the public, this is a follow-up from the, uh, the workshop at the prior meeting, uh, relative to the establishment of an opportunity zone, and this would send the, uh, proposed, uh, staff proposed, uh, map and text amendments to the planning board for their review and recommendation, which would then be returned to the council for action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council Geary, is there a second? Seconded by Councilor Weisner. Uh, members of the public that would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close public comment, uh, discussion by the council. Council ready for the question?
Mr. Mayor, just, just a, a quick, uh, thanks, uh, to staff for moving this forward as quickly as possible, I'm really excited about the opportunity of a technology, uh, hub here in Auburn and taking advantage of the, the, the state, uh, federal designation, so.
Other questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. Is there any other new business to come before the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, open session. This is the second open session of the night. Any members of the public that would like to address the council on any issue related to city business but not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the open session, move on to reports. The mayor's report, um, uh, Councilor Whiting and I were pleased to, uh, participate in the grand opening at Michael's at the Shaw's Plaza. It's very nice to have, uh, uh, national chains such as theirs moving into the city. Um, did a great job, we had great participation by the Walton School Chorus, who did a couple, uh, numbers for us while they were there, and, um, I was fortunate to participate in the read-to-me challenge at, um, Sherwood Heights School, um, uh, one afternoon this week, a great group of kids, and I, I really enjoyed that. Council Geary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be a tag team between Councilor Weisner and I, sort of, only we're not gonna get physical. The other night, we went to the shelter at the Calvary Church in Lewiston. Uh, we pulled up early and it was a rainy, drizzly night. Everything was orderly, while we were sitting in the car, uh, there was one police car parked over by the entrance, one kept seemingly circling the neighborhood. About quarter after ten, we proceeded in, by then, all those that were in line had gone in and they had, were proceeding to have their lunch, and what a fantastic spread that was donated and made by those that are serving the food. And we were very much welcomed. We just wanted to see what was going on for ourselves, or at least that's what I wanted to do, and everything seemed to be orderly, and I talked with a few people, but I'll let Councilor Weisner do his take as well.
Thank you.
The, uh, Auburn Public Library will be having an art auction, I think it's March thirteenth, which, whichever is the second Saturday in, uh, March. Uh, Marjorie Schuler was an area artist who left a bequest to this, to the library, as well as a number of really beautiful paintings. Uh, and you can go online at the library to register, it's five bucks, it's an Eventbrite thing, I think, uh, but you can register, and I believe it's from ten to noon, uh, and this will be the first of several annual art sales by the library.
And that's taking place at the library itself? Yeah, thank you. Council Cowan?
I, uh, actually wanted to say that I had stopped in at the Pleasant Street Drop, Walk-in Center, uh, Drop-In Center, uh, similar experience.
Drop-In Center, similar experience. It's really great to have a lot of community volunteers helping out, a lot of very appreciative folks, friendly folks. I had nice conversations with four or five while I was there, and there was, I encourage those who are involved with youth groups, they had a Girl Scout troop that was helping serve, so if there's people that want to have their organization go and help out, that's another option, and they had very great signage and people were very aware of the center over at Calvary. So, I think the combination is working, so I appreciate it for everyone helping.
Thank you. Counsel Weisner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it was great to attend Cavalry Church with Counsel Gary and to see what our funds are going to support. It was great to see. It was a very rainy evening that night, and we were able to see that people were very appreciative to get out of the weather, to have great, a really great meal, have a seat and really relax, put their feet up, get out of the weather, and they were grateful. The staff was very amazing to us for being there and seeing the, what great things they were doing, and so thank you for attending with me that evening.
Counsel Weisner also went upstairs to see where the visitors would sleep at night.
Yes, yeah, I was able to go upstairs and attend, see where they were putting their head down for the night. They were, from my observations, they were sleeping on the floor, they had their sleeping bags and blankets, and they were just sleeping on the floor, and they had their own designated areas, is what I observed that night.
Counsel Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had my meeting at Waste Energy, that's our burning plant here in Auburn for waste. We're having a little problem with one of our big burners, the inner walls are kind of falling apart. I don't know if it's the heat that's causing it, or if it's the way that the air is flowing through, but it's a very expensive fix, no matter how we look at it, because we'll have to shut the plant down in order to make the repairs, and when you shut her down, that means you go off our line and on to CMP's line or whoever owns the power line, which gets very costly, and we're not seeing a reason right now of why it's happening, so we're trying not to shut her down until we exactly know what's going on, but at that point, it'll be quite a cost to fix it.
Is the, if it's a shutdown, do they have to divert the waste? Is it a total shutdown or just partial?
No, it'll be only partial, maybe a couple days.
Counsel Platts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two brief updates from the school committee. I've been chirping about the school budget for a couple weeks now. It has officially begun. We reviewed our first cost centers last week. We'll be continuing that work this week in the school committee meeting. Without getting into any details, city manager mentioned it previously, but the superintendent's budget, which was released to the school committee, which we will now deliberate over, came in, I think it was five point four percent or right around five and a half percent. That's not a final number. The school committee now deliberates on that and comes up with a final number, but just so the city council can kind of understand what kind of increases the school committee, school department is eyeballing at this stage in the game, things can change. I would encourage everyone who's here, everyone watching to be a part of that process. It's very exciting stuff, so. And the second bullet point is, if everyone was paying attention in the consent agenda today, there was, there is a new vacancy in the school committee. There was a resignation of an at-large member, so just a reminder to all city council members or members of the public to encourage anyone you know who might be interested to submit their names for that. The, what did we just approve? An election in July, July, and we have an upcoming election in April for the unfilled ward for school committee seat. So, that's my update.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council and public, just a few items. One, Liz mentioned in her presentation regarding Lobster Fest, that planning is underway. That'll be May eleventh. Next, at the council meeting on March eighteenth, we will have, starting at three o'clock, a seed giveaway. This is being coordinated through the Business and Community Development Department, start at three PM, it'll go to seven PM. People coming in, there'll be plenty of seeds being displayed and available for you. March seventh, the elected officials will be doing a joint gathering, is what we're calling it, calling it rather, a gathering with the elected officials from the city of Lewiston. We'll be pushing that information out for the public to be aware of your official public gathering. It'll be at the Hilton Garden Inn at five-thirty PM, so we'll make sure that that's notified to the public. Public's obviously always welcome to any public gathering, but this will be for, there's no specific agenda. This will be a meet and greet for the elected officials, as well as, we'll probably have some discussion points at different round tables for you to have with your counterparts. Last thing, Skate with a Cop was last week during the February break. We had a huge turnout at the Norway Savings Bank Arena, probably closed over a hundred kids participated in that, so another good opportunity to do outreach in the community. That's it.
Great, thank you. Sure.
Something I wanted to add, people saw this in the paper, but last week, Gus LeBlanc passed away. I don't know if anyone knew Gus, he was a coach of mine for sports, but I know he was an educator and a big part of the community, so if anyone just has a chance to remember him and their thoughts, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is an executive session. For the public, there's no anticipated action. After the executive session, we'll go directly to adjournment. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Weisner. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the council is now in executive session.